indebtedness, it will be very difficult for you to say that Gaming Commission should do everything whom I know possible to get the money. But we've written to Attorney General, hoping that the advice he will give us may help us to retrieve the money. Thank you so much.
Minister, I'm glad you said you've written to the AG, the Attorney General. So the Attorney General respond to that. But as far as I know, SIC FSL is was in a different situation altogether before all this banking issue started. So I'm glad you have written to the AG. So I don't want to say anything because of the the knowledge I have, but you have written to AG. So we'll leave it at that and wait for AG to respond. But I must put on record that SIC FSL was in a different situation altogether before the banking issues, the debt restructuring started. So that must be on record, yes.
Okay, madam, since you've said that, let's move on to the next one. The next infractions paragraph eighteen twenty-one unpaid license renewal fees. And Madam Abner Osayasa will take that one, eighteen twenty-one.
Gaming Commission, what is the process that one needs to take to renew license for for the work they do, as in those betting companies, the gaming operators? What is the process that they have to go through?
Our gaming operators, when their license lapses, what they do is that they notify the Gaming Commission. We even do the notification first, three months prior to desperation of their license. And then we ask them to come and renew. We do that with, listen, we send them notices. And then if they indicate that they want to renew, then we send them their bills. And then they do come and then renew. That that is a normal process. If they satisfy all requirements.
So that if they are operating and they haven't renewed, must it be the auditors' business to come and point it out to you that their licenses have expired and they need to renew them?
No, please.
And so why did we allow more than twenty, about twenty-six gaming operators to operate with expired licenses to the tune of fourteen million Ghana Cedis?
Madam Chair, I mean, I know the infractions dates back to days back from twenty twenty-three. It wasn't even twenty twenty-four alone, twenty twenty-three.
Respectfully, when we come here, we don't care when the infraction began.
I I know, but I'm I'm
is to make sure, please hold on, ours is to make sure that you have been cited for a particular infraction. What have you done about it?
Okay.
That is how we go about it.
Okay, I'm going to address that.
So go straight to that.
When we got the infraction of fourteen million plus, what we did was that we realized that we need to do a reconciliation with auditors. We did that. So we found out that the money wasn't actually fourteen, it was nine point something million. Following that, we have sent out demand notices and six point seven million Cedis have been recovered, leaving a balance of two point eight million. We still pursuing them. We still pursuing them. Out of the number, the twenty-nine, about five of them have ceased operations. But we will recover the two point eight million outstanding before the end of this year. That's an assurance from me.
You have done all this, and this is what you have to tell us, not whether you were not here and it did not happen under your watch. When you take up a responsibility, you inherit both the liability and the assets. And so, sir, I want to find out from you if currently there are some who are operating without renewing their license. Currently, there are some out of the five that you said they have they have halted their business and they are no more operating. How about those who are still operating? Do we still have some who are yet to renew their licenses?
We have pursued them and I
Yes or no first, please?
No.
No?
No.
So all those operating are operating with a renewed license?
Yes, please.
Currently as we speak?
Yes, Chair.
Okay. Auditors, can you please confirm the amount they have retrieved, what is outstanding and where?
Yes, Honorable Chair, the amount was revised to nine million, five hundred and fifty-seven thousand and fifty-two Cedis, point seven-three. Then what has actually been recovered is six million, seven hundred and twenty-eight thousand, five hundred and forty Cedis, point zero-three. So what we have outstanding
Yes.
is a difference between the nine million and the
And the six.
the six point seven eight million. I can do that calculation and give it to you.
Oh, no, that's about two point three. So that that's fine.
All right, so two point, two point eight.
Two point eight.
Two point eight million.
Okay. So, sir, when should we expect you to clear the two point eight? Yes, ma'am?
Yes, Madam Chair, respectfully, I agree with you that governance is continuous. But I mean, you and I have been in this house for long. I think we may have to amend our laws to hold the specific persons who are there to come and answer. Why am I saying this? This is an infraction twenty twenty, twenty twenty-four. Someone was sitting there and acted irresponsibly.
Minister?
Sorry, Chair, let me finish, let me finish.
It is given, it's there. So you could have asked them to come.
The person, the person is no longer in office.
Yes, but you you could have asked them to come.
Because it's not
written to them and you shown us proof that you have written to them, yes.
Unless we intend, unless we are going to be arresting people and dragging them here, because I can tell you that in this case, when some of them came, I asked that, can you call, I know the next one, for example, that has to do with somebody who went on scholarship or something. I know it to come. And we are asking that, can you get the CEO to answer? I mean, some of the tricky answers is, look, you inherited the place, move the assets and the liability, deal with the liability. He came to office in February and with three months, he was able to retrieve that money. Someone was there, he was giving the management notice showing this infraction. He sat throughout that period, he never retrieved a dime. Yet now five of the companies are, 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 what do you call it, have gone defunct. And the amount of money in their name, madam, it is better we tell the committee the truth. Those companies, that amount of money in their name cannot be retrieved because they are no longer in existence. Our effort is that even if they have changed their name or if they haven't changed business, we'll try and pursue them. But so long as those companies are defunct, those monies that are in their name cannot be retrieved. So I've told him yesterday, you better do the arithmetic, identify the five that are defunct and be able to tell the auditors that this one, they are no longer in existence. So therefore, you better treat it as bad debt rather than give some false hope that I'll go and retrieve it. Because you will not be able to retrieve that money because they are no longer in existence. So I think that that's clear. But when they do those reconciliation with the auditors, those that are still in operation, we can assure you that we'll do everything to retrieve the amount. But we'll not be able to tell how much it is because they have to do the reconciliation with the auditors. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Minister. Minister, the person in charge said he gave us a year. He said, he, he, end of the year or so. Did you say you are going to finish the two point eight end of the year?
Yeah, I didn't say, I didn't say that, but
Did you say that, yes or no?
Yes.
Okay, that's okay. Minister, this is not the first time.
Unfortunately, Chair, with a greater respect. You see, some of them don't know what parliamentary parties is. You come to a committee of parliament and you say, by the end of the year, I'm going to retrieve that money. I don't, the year, you don't come giving excuses. Maybe he has forgotten the lesson I gave him yesterday. I told him that when you come to the Committee of Parliament, you tell them the full of your truth. That's the oath you just saw. Those five that are collapsed, you cannot retrieve that money. And that money is part of the two point eight. But unfortunately, they've not segregated to know the exact amount, which have taxed that they should do with the auditors so that they know out of the two point eight, how much of it is of the five companies that are no longer in existence. And treat that as something that cannot be retrieved. So that you know that what is left, that has to be retrieved, then you can pursue those ones and retrieve them.
Thank you very much, Minister. For that, there's a process. And they know the process. If they find out from the auditors, they will tell them how to write off these things. You do the process, it comes to parliament, and then parliament gives you that permission to write off a public, there's a public amount that is sitting in your books. So that process, work with the auditors. If clearly, there's no way you can trace these five companies, they don't have any assets that you can rely on. You go through the process with the guidance of the auditors and your minister, I believe you can go, you can get it to parliament and then parliament can write it off. But like the minister said, you tell us the whole truth and nothing but the truth. And so that when we are also putting it into our reports, we know that what we are sending to the floor of parliament for debate is the truth and nothing but the truth. But I must say that you have done well because you had a debt of nine million and you have been able to reduce it to less than three million. And so clearly, I was going to commend you for that. By the way, you started that in twenty, I came in twenty, it was in twenty twenty-three. That was, that was no good area. But I must say that you have done very well because within a short period of time, you have been able to reduce the debt by more than seventy percent. And so keep it up. But my, my issue is this. As you are there, make sure you don't build up on license renewal moving forward. As you are there, make sure you don't build up on license renewal. We want, the next time the auditors come, we don't want any unpaid license renewal in your books. Because I can see that you know how to take money from people. So use that use that gift that you have to make sure you retrieve anything that belongs to and the Gaming Commission. On this note, I'll end here. Thank you.
Madam Chair, can I just add this? I mean, we've been trying to digitalize almost all the services under the ministry. And I'm very hopeful that maybe by the course of the year, working with the G R A, will be done with that of Gaming Commission. Sad that when your license expires, we'll take you off. So we may not even have this issue, but your, what do you call it, advice is well taken. Thank you so much.
Honorable Minister, I also need to commend Gaming Commission. Right now, the management now for doing such a great job retrieving some of the money that was left in the past. And this should be a warning to those who thought maybe because they are not there, we will not go after them. We'll go after them. We'll go after them. In fact, I would have loved it. Minister, I would have loved it if we had known the names of those people who left that mess. We mentioned it on air. That you, you left that mess over there. Somebody is cleaning up for you. But let's move on. The next infraction is on paragraph eighteen twenty-five, and Honorable Clatus will take care of that one.
Thank you, Chairman. Chairman, this infraction is on unserved bond term to the tune of four hundred and fourteen thousand, five hundred and ninety-one Ghana Cedis. Director. Director, one Moses Tey Mensa, who went on steady leave with pay and was supposed to serve the Gaming Commission, resigned immediately after his studies on the thirtieth of January, twenty twenty-five, without serving the three years bond and also failed to pay the compensation extended to him during the steady leave with pay period, calculated to be the amount I mentioned earlier, including interest. Where is Minister Mensa?
Honorable Chair, I have written severely to Moses Tey Mensa. I've finished my correspondence that I've had with him to the committee. And then I demanding a payment. You know, he responds back saying that he is so pursuing another master's degree program. So I said that in order for me to believe what he's saying, he said that he has finished one master degree program in financial analytics. So I said, okay, let me know the school that you went in the U S. Let me even have the transcripts. Up to now, he has never provided any of such. And then he keeps on tossing the Gaming Commission up and down. So I had a discussion with the minister and the minister asked me to write to the Attorney General's office for advice. We've done that. We've also written another letter to the I G P to assist us in recovering the amount. Finally, yesterday, when we had a meeting with the minister at his office, he asked me to write another letter to him personally so that he will assist us to recover that amount because four hundred and fourteen thousand, five hundred and ninety, four hundred and fourteen, five hundred and ninety point five-three Cedis is a lot of money. It's a lot of money that can take care of half of this necessary that the Gaming Commission receives at the end of the month. Yes, Madam, Madam Chair, maybe before my colleague comes in. I mean, like the ranking was saying, the commissioner was Peter Meriku. And on this particular instance, he did not follow the laid-down procedure for granting someone, what do you call it, a steady leave with pay. He didn't follow. Because what you do, you expect to get admission, you expect to all the things, when the person is in school, after every semester, the person will have to send you the results for you to know that the person is still in school. And he didn't follow all that. So I've asked the commissioner to write to me. I'm going to do three things. One, on Peter Meriku, I'm going to insist that he's invited to pay the money, one. Two, the one who guaranteed, a lady who is still working in the Gaming Commission, she's also going to be made to pay part of the money. And three, on Tey Mensa himself, fortunately, immigration works under me. I'm putting him on the stop list. Any day he's coming to this country, he'll be arrested at the airport and he will have to pay that money. This is the things that, the three things that I'm going to do. We will retrieve this money. We will retrieve this money. It may not be today, it may not be tomorrow. But like I'm saying, Peter Meriku will have to answer why he granted that person that leave without following the due process and making that guy get to run away with over four hundred thousand without studying. The one who guaranteed, if you are guaranteeing for someone, you should know the trustworthiness of that person before you do the guarantee. And for him, who thinks that he's out of the country, then he may have to stay there forever because any day he's coming, he's going to be on our stop list and he'll be arrested at the airport and we will make sure that he will pay that money with the interest. Thank you so much.
Honorable Minister.
Thank you, Minister. Let me also add this. The, the former, that's Meriku was the chief executive there.
The commissioner.
The commissioner. You see, this man resigned on the thirtieth of January, and he even supervised that. He brought resignation letter and he took. I mean, someone is on steady leave with pay and the person did not serve his bond. And you took his resignation letter on the thirtieth of January. So I'm adding to what Minister said that he actually deserved to be punished. He shouldn't go away with this. Thank you.
Honorable colleague, I was going to make a ruling on it. Minister, you've made my job easy. Whatever you said is my ruling on it. Auditors, take note. And you said this, Mr. Meriku, right? Who was the commissioner at that time? He needs to hurry up and come and pay this money. Because he needs to know that he was working with Ministry of Interior. I G P is here. Do I need to go anywhere? And the head of the prisons is also here. Thank you very much, Honorable Minister.
Mister Chairman, by this, then I think we should extend to the thousand and one people who had also done same at the Ministry of Health. Minister, maybe when there's a reshuffle and they want to turn you anywhere, they should send you to Ministry of Health. You bring some.
Please, my people don't want me to be, my people don't want me to go anywhere.
We had a thousand and one of unserved bonds from the Ministry of Health. And so if we are all going to take some drastic measures like this, I believe it will go a long way to stop this because there are people, genuine people who will go and come back. But when we do this, we sort of place a stop on genuine people who want to go steady and then come back. So I believe that if we put some sanctions or punitive measures like this, it will serve as a deterrent to people who sign bonds, they go, they run away, receive salaries and don't come back. Thank you.
Chairman, with a kind permission, auditors. I'm a bit curious about paragraph eighteen twenty-six. When it says he came back to resign and you wrote that in the report, does it mean you cited a resignation letter from him?
Yes, Honorable Chair.
And it was received by the commission?
We cited the letter of resignation. As to how he submitted it, whether physically or through the internet, but we cited the letter, yeah.
Thank you.
Mister Chair, I have an explanation for it. He resigned a day after I have resumed office. So he just sent it. And so that is the reason why you have it. So I've given it to the auditors.
Sir, we'll get him. Don't worry. The next infraction is on paragraph nineteen, eighteen twenty-nine, and that is Ghana Police Service, Buno East Region. Gaming Commission, you are discharged, please.
We came together, we have to go together, so.
Okay.
Almost all those infractors are sitting around, so they are not short of seats.
Abandoning infrastructure at our teaching man. And the amount on it is one point six million. What has happened to this project now?
Honorable Chair, yes, this is among a lot of other projects that are still in the abandoned stage. And so that the police administration has taken note of this and then say that we are waiting funds from the Ministry of Finance so that we can be able to tackle most of these projects which are still in the abandoned stage. This is not the only project. There are a lot of other projects in the same stage. Thank you.
Chair, yesterday, Madam Chair, yesterday, when we reviewed it, I asked the I G P to do additional work to find out, one, how much will it cost to get it completed? And then, two, currently, there are office that they are occupying in there, it is a rented one. How much rent are we paying? So that we'll be able to just suppose, as against the rent that we are paying, whether the amount of money required to finish it, maybe we may be able to use even our I G F to do it. But they are going to tax that, the amount of money will tell us what we will be able to. If it is so heavy, then we have to, like the I G said, we have to conduct to rely on the Ministry of Finance. But if the money involved to get the thing completed, it's not that huge. They will try and use our I G F to finance off renting. So this is what we are trying to do. But like the I G P rightly said, we have so many of that. And following this audit, we have taxed the Estate Department of the Police to itemize all those uncompleted, not just listing them, but also telling roughly how much will be required to get them completed so that it will help us have a clear strategy how to get them, all those ones completed, so of going ahead and building new ones once these ones are staying, are still at the abandoned state. So we hope that once we get those things, you may see some improvement in the number of abandoned projects. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Honorable Minister. Your experience and maturity shows. Thank you. We wish we could clone you and send to other ministries.
Put me into more trouble.
Thank you, Chairman. I, I think I'm a bit curious about the the mode in which that this particular property was acquired through auction. And I think that's, that's right knowledge, that properties acquired through such means, auction, may be encumbered in certain ways that you may not be aware. Please, I just want to know whether you've done your checks and whether there aren't any hidden encumbrances which is preventing you from proceeding with the completion or renovation of the property for your staff to move in. Thank you.
Honorable Chair, there's, there's no encumbrance so far. It is about getting money from the central government to complete the project. Because this is not the first of its kind. We have a lot of this.
I G, please, I'm struggling to hear you.
Okay, yes. What I'm saying is that this is not the first of its kind. We have a lot of these projects which are all on this stage. And then we hope that with our meeting today, we can channel our grievances through you for most of these projects which are still in this, some are in the foundation stage, some are in the lintel level. And I think like Minister said, we'll take our time and compile all these lists so that we can be able to get these projects completed. And so, Honorable Chair, we are passing our issues through you to the central government for assistance. Thank you.
All right, let's, let's move on here. The next infraction is on Tano Ponkrono. Tafu. You see, when you change your R to L and L to R, it makes it difficult. Honorable Shalit will take care of that one, please.
Thank you, Mister Chair. Tafu Ponkrono Divisional Police Command. This infraction is to do with abandoned program during study leave. The auditors noted that Sergeant Florence Enyem Knedu with payroll number three, seven, four, one, proceeded on a four-year study leave with pay from December, twenty twenty-one to November, twenty twenty-four. However, the checks, their checks revealed that she abandoned the program and traveled outside the country. In this regard, Miss Knedu is required to refund the total amount of one hundred and nineteen thousand, three hundred and sixty-six point one-three Ghana Cedis as total salaries paid her during her study leave period. The auditors also recommended that the divisional commander should recover those amounts with interest and pay same to the Auditor General's recovery account. Failure to do this, the divisional commander should pay. Can I, can the committee know the progress of this recommendation?
Honorable Chair, the amount involved with interest has been paid and has been recovered and same pain to the Auditor General recovery's account at the Bank of Ghana. Thank you.
Auditors, please, can you confirm this?
Honorable Chair, so the amount has been recovered, inclusive of interest. So a total of one hundred and thirty-five thousand, one hundred and seventy-eight Cedis was recovered. Thank you.
Madam Chair, permit me, just to add that, yes. I mean, and get your story to the I G P, we insisted that in the security services, they are supposed to do reconciliation or head, what do you call it? Validation every month. So if you are the superior who failed to do the validation and check very well, you have to be discharged. And I can tell you, this amount of, we discharged those who were involved and made sure they paid it together with the interest. And we've told, I've told everybody, so long as I'm there, if this thing comes, we won't even wait for auditors to raise it. The moment you get this infraction, just know that you are going to pay and you pay straight without any delay. So, but thank you so much for raising it, the auditors, and we can assure you that we'll do everything whom I know possible to make sure that this is reduced drastically. Thank you so much.
Honorable, I think we need you with all our other ministries. You're doing a great job and we commend you for that. We hope others will follow suit. Thank you.
All right, let's move on. The next infraction is on paragraph eighteen thirty-seven. And Honorable Enes will take care of that one.
Thank you, Chair. So this infraction has to do with unearned salary for district police headquarters, Ninhahini. So the auditors noted that one officer, Godfred Akwasi-Buatin, with service number five, zero, two, nine, nine, embarked on an annual leave of forty-two days effective since May, twenty twenty-four. He was expected to resume by the sixteenth of June, twenty twenty-four, but failed to resume duty. What I find What I find interesting here is that the district commander, who became aware of this situation, continued to validate this officer for the two months which constituted into this on-end salary. IGP, can you confirm if you've been able to recover the total amount of 20,991.39 with interest at the prevailing Bank of Ghana rate?
Honorable Chair, the amount involved with interest has been paid, recovered and same paid into the Auditor General Recovery Account at the Bank of Ghana. And the total amount involved now was 23,178. Thank you.
Auditors, can you confirm?
Honorable Chair, the assertion is accurate.
So I think, Mr. Chair, this falls in line with the directive from the minister.
Yes, and Madam Chair, if you permit me, there was one bit I forgot to mention. And now, with the help of the IGP and POMAG, we are even agreeing that if you are a service commander and you supervise this, you may, you may be hearing complain. When the time for your promotion comes, we'll use all this against you to delay it. To say that you sit and supervise wrong things happening. So don't come knocking on our door that it stands for promotion. You should suffer not only the repayment, but even when it comes to promotion, you all should be delayed to serve as a further deterrent for people to be up and doing, and doing the validation. So we can assure you that we are working so hard to make sure that these things are no longer within the service. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Honorable Minister. The next infraction is on paragraph 1841. Anduk Amwakwata Oforiata. You've taken all the names. We'll take care of it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Payment, the infraction is payment without official receipts to the tune of 33,040 CDs relating to five payment vouchers of the Buakwa Divisional Police Command. The auditors recommended that the divisional commander should recover the total amount of 33,040 CDs from the divisional paymaster and same paid into the Auditor General's recovery account at the Bank of Ghana, failing which the divisional commander should pay. Please, I'd like to ask, what is the status of this recovery?
Honorable Chair, in terms of the time when the internal auditors were doing their work, some of the documents were inadvertently removed from the, you know, the payment vouchers, hence the audit query. The official receipts concerned have been subsequently retrieved, submitted and verified by the auditors. And so there's an attachment of all the payments, the attachments for the five companies that these monies were paid with, to. So everything has been recovered. Thank you.
Auditors, can you please confirm?
Honorable Chair, those receipts were subsequently presented to us and we have verified them. So the matter is resolved.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, can I say something here? One thing that we noticed with the auditors, when they write the management, what do you call it, report, I know by law they are supposed to give within a month a response. Because we operate a command and control structure. So sometimes you may write, then they have to pass through the IG and go down. So it takes a little time. Because this one, for example, I'm very sure, if it has gotten to the officers involved in good time, all the attachments were there, you will have received it. But because of the route, that's why it delayed and it went. So I will be careful if maybe with the security agencies, the auditors can find a way of working together to make sure within that one month, the team travels the path and gets to its destination, we may be able to avoid some of this because there was no any infraction because just the attachment went off. But it's been submitted as they said. Thank you so much.
All right, the next infraction is on paragraph 1843. And Honorable Ella Plim will take care of that one.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This infraction is illegal possession of firearms by civilians. Contrary to the above stated provision, we reviewed that the firearms licenses and noted that 606 firearms were illegally possessed by civilians since the licenses had expired and had not been renewed thereby, rendering their possessions and use unlawful. We obtained the 606 illegal possession of firearms from the licenses issued from the general counterpoor receipts to holders of firearms. Details are below. What is the status of this infractions? Thank you.
Honorable Chair, the division has compiled a database of all licensed gun holders as recommended by the auditing. And so now what we are doing now is we are sensitizing people who are in possession of guns and then they have licenses and then when the license expired, they don't go to renew as expected. So this thing is ongoing. We are getting the list of all so that when even the time comes, the police will call you to come and renew your license. So this exercise is ongoing now. Thank you very much.
IG, please, I want to find out what is the process that one will have to go through to register a gun?
Yes, to register a gun means that you have to be given the license or the permit to possess a gun through this firearms registry. So when you have this gun, you are given the permit to be in possession just like how you get driver's license permit. So you have it for a period of one year. And so after a year, you have to go back and then renew your license. But the problem we have is that people don't actually go straight to go and renew their licenses until something happens with the gun before police gets to know that such a license holder has not renewed.
Is the process straightforward? You know, sometimes people are reluctant to do some of these things because of the heckling, the pressures. So is the process straightforward that I have to go to this office? I go, I show, just like you're going to have your, get a driver's license. You go through the test, your eye. So is the process given and is the process that straightforward?
Yes, one of the easiest license or renewals to possess is the possession of, is the renewal of your gun license. It doesn't take you more than 30 minutes to go to this office, firearms office, and immediately they check all the records and then the license is renewed. That one doesn't take time at all. It's one of the easiest way to possess and then renew your license or your permit to possess firearms. Thank you very much.
Madam Chair, can I also help here? One of the challenge that we have is that everything is manual. Everything that they do is manual. So for example, you want to possess a sidearm, you write to the minister for the interior. I'm limited to the NIB, that's the National Investigation Bureau, or the CID. They'll do a background check on the chair and see, oh, what does she do? She's a member of parliament. Is she a church to the public? Is she who's this gun? They'll do all that check and then they will advise the minister that, oh, upon our checks, we think that she qualifies to have it. But because then now you go to the CID office, they'll take your fingerprint, they'll record all those things and then you pay the necessary fees and then they grant you the license. The interesting thing that a lot of people don't know is that you may take your license in November. In December, it expires. It's not that for one year means until next year, November. The law is said that January, every license that you have, even if you held it, if you had it 30th December, January 1st, it expires. You have to renew it. But because all these things are manual, even, is it like, double as, I don't know, DVLA, whether they have computerized their things and now they may have our numbers so that they can send bulk messages to us. So it's like trying to get everybody who has a vehicle to come and renew his roadworthiness. If it is not computerized, it becomes a done-tenture. So this 606 that they are talking about, they are scattered across the country. And trying to reach them, I mean, within a year, people might have even changed address and what have you. But what are we doing to mitigate this? We are currently working on digitalizing, like I mentioned earlier, almost every services in the ministry. In fact, we are almost at the tail end of it. We are very hopeful by November, December, it should come on board. So this is what's going to happen. You register, we have you in the registry. In the registry, we have your contact number. We have all your details. So three months to expiry, we'll send you a notification that your license will expire 31st December. And you no longer need to walk to any CID office where you have to go and join a queue and do these things to pay the renewal. Once we have, because the details, the data will be talking to each other. Over the one year, we have not recorded any criminal activities about the chair that granted the license to hold the gun. Automatically, you'll be able to pay through your Momo or using your bank details so that you immediately renew it without having to do the struggle. So many people even tend to forget that the time has come for them to go. A lot of them maybe along the line, they just see the gun, say, hey, when was the last time I renewed my, so want to digitalize this? And by the grace of God, when we are done by the close of, worst case, by the close of the year, all these things will be digitalized and it will give people the opportunity to do the renewal online without necessarily having to walk to the police headquarters. The only thing is that if there's a criminal record over the period, if you want to renew, it may deny you and that may warrant that you now come physical. But it also helps us now, even if you change the address, because we are going to link it to your Ghana card. Even if you change your address, we'll be able to tell that Munterka is having a gun. He has not been able to renew it over this period and he has changed address from Asaleboche to Botema and we'll be able to track him and either retrieve the gun from him or get him to renew his license. So these are the things that we are putting in place. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much, Honorable Chairman, Honorable Minister. The next infraction is on paragraph 1847 and is Ghana Prison Service Head Office. Honorable Sebastian Day will take care of that one.
Yeah, thank you, Chairman. This infraction actually touches the very core of human dignity, Chairman. And section 35 of the Prison Service Act states that the DG Director General shall ensure that a prisoner is regularly supplied with wholesome and nourishing food in quantities sufficient to maintain the prisoner in good health. This is our law. But the auditors found out when they went on review that as of now, 101 Ghana